Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 13th, 2021. Council will continue to meet in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue registering and speaking virtually as there will be limited numbers of seats available in council chambers. Our first order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is David Vats, which will be followed by Kelsey Leonard. Leonard.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Beautiful. All right. My name is David Vats. I'm a resident of Greenfield. Prior to that, I was a resident of Oakland. I'm here to speak strongly in support of the proposed rezoning of Oakland because of the numerous benefits it has for both the neighborhood and the city. I support sending those changes to the planning commission. Since I moved to Oakland in 2004, the city has seen significant changes. The rise of the tech industry in Pittsburgh has had great effects on the city, including the revitalization of many neighborhoods. However, Pittsburgh has not built nearly enough new housing to keep up with this. In fact, Pittsburgh lags behind nearly every major metro area and new housing built over the last decade. This is a major problem because when we don't build enough housing, it invariably causes rents and housing costs to rise. When I moved to the city in 2004, costs felt reasonable. They don't anymore. I strongly support the plan to rezone Oakland to create 750, 1,000 new housing units in the neighborhood. These units are desperately needed and will be good for both the neighborhood and the city. As with any project that will change a neighborhood, we've already seen many detractors come to bash this project. It's important that we don't let a vocal minority derail such a transformative project with complaints about process. The proposed project would be enormously beneficial to both the neighborhood and the city. I was shocked to hear that despite being the third largest employment center in Pennsylvania, the population of Oakland has actually been shrinking. This is an embarrassment to our region. People want to live near where they work, but we have made it impossible in Oakland by not building housing your jobs.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kelsey Leonard, followed by Leam Rosen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So this is Kelsey Leonard, and I'm a resident of Greenfield, and I'm here to voice my support for the Oakland rezoning and sending the plan to the planning commission. I support it because the benefits of bringing more housing close to jobs, which will help to increase residents' social and economic mobility. As a resident of the city, since I moved here over a decade ago for college, Pittsburgh has become my adoptive home. Over the time I've been here, I've seen tremendous growth in the city in terms of economic opportunity in the form of new jobs, rebuilt neighborhoods, and overall growth. However, the growth of our region has not benefited everyone equally. As more jobs, as more job opportunities have come to the city, our region has not kept up with building an adequate supply of homes for people who want to be in the city. This is a very bad thing because it causes the most vulnerable residents to be displaced, often moving far away from jobs into the suburbs. For our city to remain vibrant, we must restore the opportunity for residents to live and work in the city. The only way we can address this issue is by building more homes for our residents and lots of them. Building new housing has proven to keep, keep housing and rent prices down, and building housing in areas of high economic mobility like Oakland would be a huge win for residents of modest means who want to live near world-class employment, education, culture, and amenity opportunities. I strongly support the proposed zoning rules because building new homes in areas like Oakland is the best way we can ensure continued economic opportunity for all residents. I urge you to support this plan and send it to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leam Rosen, followed by Ari Weitzman.
Yep, this is Liam. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I am not a longtime resident of Pittsburgh, but I did move to Pittsburgh in 2015. I'm from Portland, Oregon originally, and became enamored with the city one summer, moved out here, bought a house in Squirrel Hill. There are many things I love about Pittsburgh, but one thing I think we can improve on is urban density and access to transportation in the core areas of the city. I think that everyone here can agree that the city is changing quite a bit. It's becoming an attractive destination, especially during the pandemic, but I believe that the natural tendency for zoning restrictions is to lag behind the changes of where people want to go. So I'm also here to speak in favor of the rezoning for Oakland. I think that with every change, there's going to be trade-offs, and I'm sure you will hear, I'm very happy that the first two speakers so far have been in favor. I honestly expected a barrage of people against it, but I'm sure you will have heard from longtime Pittsburgh residents and their fears about change and what will happen if we do this. I can say that in my hometown of Portland, lack of change in zoning has caused our rent prices to more than double in the time since I left there and went to high school there. I do not want to see that happen to Pittsburgh. I want to see Pittsburgh remain a vibrant city for people to live, work, and play in, especially those that choose to live downtown in New Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ari Weitzman, followed by Dr. Miller.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Ari Weitzman. I'm a resident of Shaler, a former resident of Squirrel Hill, and I currently work for a company in East Liberty. I'm also here to voice my strong support for the proposed rezoning of Oakland because of the numerous benefits it has for both the neighborhood and the city. I support sending those changes to the planning commission. I've seen how housing prices have risen as more jobs have moved into the area while new housing construction has remained stagnant. We badly need new homes in Pittsburgh. The projects continue to get killed by the city, angry neighbors, or community groups interested in protecting their property values under the guise of retaining neighborhood character. I strongly support the Oakland rezoning because it's an opportunity for us to right these wrongs. The chance to get 750 to 1,000 new homes in a neighborhood with so much employment opportunity is the right thing for the city. Co-locating jobs and homes gives people the ability to avoid long commute, and critically, there's also a major benefit to the environment by allowing people to live in walkable communities. And of course, more housing in areas like Oakland keeps rents and mortgages more affordable for everyone. And although I am a Pittsburgh native, up until 2018, I had lived for four years on the West Coast in San Francisco, and during my time in the Bay Area, I saw the constant obstruction of new development by community groups, looking to prevent their neighborhood from changing and keep their property values high. Unfortunately, I also saw the effects of this obstruction, constantly rising housing costs, increased homelessness, and lack of opportunity for people of modest means. While Pittsburgh's not San Francisco, I worry that the obstruction of the development of new homes will have a negative and similar effect on the city and will lead us down the path of San Francisco, where we have tremendous job opportunities but increasingly scarce affordable homes for our residents. This is especially true in a neighborhood like Oakland that has the ability to bring residents near to jobs, transit, parks, and other amenities. For the good of our city and the region, please support these zoning changes for Oakland and send them to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Miller, followed by Naomi Mullen.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Bels Hoover, and Carrick, Global Intelligence Society candidate for Ameri 2021, globalintelligencesociety.org. A shout out to Asian-American Pittsburgh pre-university and university students. Your educational achievements make your group supreme over all others. The best of what it means to be a US American. You compete, you succeed. Congratulations. Juhei and Amideto. And I invite at least 10,000 Taiwanese to come to our city as soon as possible to escape what is coming. A concern of this city council is the political empowerment of Pittsburghers of Black African descent citizens. Some of our tax money has been allocated by this council, even today in the agenda, to the Black political empowerment project. Councilors Lavelle and Burgess, in particular, are you willing to do so for the political empowerment of Pittsburghers of Asian, Latin, Native American, and white European descent? I view Pennsylvania State Representative Jake Wheatley's Golden Luncheon to be a Black African Pittsburgher political empowerment networking event and a labor union Democratic Party event. I have an invitation. I refuse. How comfortable are Black African Republican Party Pittsburghers with the GL? How comfortable are non-union Pittsburghers? Over 75% of the city workforce are non-union. Councilors Lavelle and Burgess, in particular, why don't you and Representative Wheatley cancel the GL and apply the GL expense to restore the chess players and mates club on center near Kirkpatrick, near Wheatley's people's office, and near Ham's barbershop? And what is it with Ham's? Since Tom Boyd took over in April 2021 after URA involvement and Pennsylvania investment, state investment of over $500,000, what is going on? Why is Ham still appear to be a shambles? What are architects Bird and Webster doing? Are they being paid? Are they being replaced? I request an audit. What is it with you, counselor, east-west, north-south, unite at Senator Kirkpatrick Lavelle? After I approached you in 2018 to bring solar energy panel education and business there to employ Hilarites in more than barbershop jobs, citizen, citizens, Lavelle did not, Mr. Lavelle did not reply. Is he stupid? You are not. You're one of the most intelligent people that ever deserve, as far as I can tell, on this council. You need to be able to respond to this. If not, then, and white people working there, then we view it as racism.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen, followed by Andrea Boikowitz.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says, "All power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness." Where did elected officials get the idea that they are lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? How can Gregory Coyle sit smugly at a town hall meeting in opposition to we, the property owners of Bon Air? His response about the parking issue at the building is that the mayor is not going to require it. Is Mayor Pudido his best buddy? No wonder the mayor is on his way out. Our community is not his to make and mold to his will. We, the people of Bon Air, do not consent to this threat to our peace, safety, and happiness. Official suppression has consequences. My sincere, consistent request is that city council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air's school building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce watershed to Route 51. Increase green space to benefit all ages and stages. Protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed to Route 51, and this is your opportunity to help that need. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Boikowitz, followed by Akuhanahal Malkina.
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Andrea Boikowitz, and I live on Parkview Avenue in Central Oakland. And I, for the benefit of folks who might not have seen, last Tuesday, city council hosted a public hearing regarding Bill 2021 1906, and 35 people signed up to speak. Of the 31 who appeared, 27 spoke clearly in opposition to the bill. Oakland residents don't agree on much often. Ours is a neighborhood of strong opinions and opposing interests, and as a regional center that attracts close to 100,000 workers, patients, students, and visitors every day, there are people in our city and our region who feel they have a stake in Oakland's future as well. The only way to ensure all those competing interests have the opportunity to develop collaborative and constructive solutions to address local challenges is to engage them in a public planning process. The problem with 1906, its cardinal sin, is that it has skipped that planning process. Accepting the bill as written or even as rewritten is an affront to the city's public servants and a big insult to all the people who have put hundreds upon hundreds of hours of their lives into the Oakland Plan process over the last two years. You should not think that opponents of this bill are opposed to greater density in Oakland, or that we are stick-in-the-mud, closed-minded, nimby skulls. We are actively looking for ways to make Oakland more affordable and accessible. Unlike people who don't live here, we are intimately familiar with the housing market in Oakland. None of the people who have spoken in favor of this bill so far today has the least clue how the unique market forces that drive unaffordability in Oakland work, and none of them has participated in the Oakland Plan process to learn more about how we are constructively working to deal with the complex and tightly interrelated issues we're trying hard to manage. Let the Oakland Plan finish, and we will show you all the new opportunities for greater density, new economic opportunity, improved green space and amenities for commuters and visitors and residents, safer and more accessible mobility connections, integrated programs to support affordability and supportive services in all parts of Oakland that the plan will include. We are not afraid of change. We are asking you to trust the Department of City Planning's process. Hold 1906. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Akuhanahal Malkina.
Greetings, Pankruti. My title is Akuhanahal Malkina. I am the chief. I am the grand Inca of the Aroquois and Federation of Aboriginal American people. Today, I would like to speak about the tale of two cities. Recently, Erica Strasburger passed legal legislation for...
It appears we have lost Akuhanahal Malkina. She is dropped. So that does exhaust, if she comes back on, I'll call her. But for now, are there any other speakers with us today in chambers? Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the K. Lever Ervis Tires. We came down to city council to explain that they have taken this security. We have no security in the building for the seniors because they've made that decision. Okay, now, we had a note that some of the representatives was going to come. They canceled it. This happens to us all the time. Another thing I want to bring up is this for you, Mr. Lavelle. The seniors in the building stopped me and said, "Who is this person that is taking over the shop and save?" They said, "Why didn't you contact us? Let us know that you were getting ready to try and fill that part. How come we didn't get a chance to know about these meetings? And who is this person? He already has one, a restaurant or something in Oakland, I mean, in Bloomfield. You know where he is. We don't." And the city, the citizens want another meeting with this man to see who he is and why is he a foreigner? Because it seems like that's all you put up there in the Hill District is the foreigners, not giving the Black people a chance. Okay, I'm going to deviate. I'm going to this bill. You're getting ready to talk about the bill 2021 1975. And so as to identify specific projects, I want to make a resolution further amending this bill. I am asking that I be paid for all the work that I did. I explained to you, and I came down to tell you that weeds were almost as tall as me, and the rats and raccoons were running out whenever we would walk down the street. I have a senior that was there. She says, Ms. Brown, 12 years, no one's ever cleaned Mercer, Wiley, Befford, and Crawford. I did it. I cleaned it. It took me weeks. And my granddaughter had pictures, but then in her phone, but she exchanged her phone and didn't take the little part in there. I'm sorry, I'm having a little problem. Coming down here is very disappointing to me. And you know why? Let me tell you something. We were outside. You don't open the door before 10:00. So we're standing out there, me and Mr. Miller. We're talking. Here comes the newspaper reporter and so on. Out comes Mr. Connor, O'Connor. They get to talking and stuff, and then they tell us to be quiet, to be quiet. Why is it that we can't speak in here like we want to? It's Mr. Burgess will tell me I can only speak a certain way, and Kraus will tell me I have to face the front. I can't even look sideways. Tired of it.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers with us today? Last call. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
All right.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor.
I am here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Non-members present.
Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law. We're going to take one bill out of order. We're going to take Bill 1986 with the Social Security offset first. It needs held for a public hearing.
Bill 1986, ordinance amended the city code at Title I Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 192, pensions, municipal pension plan number two, section 19223, contributions by members in section 19226, pension allowance in order to remove the Social Security offset for non-union members and to fund the removal of the offset.
Motion to, forgive me, hold for Capitol House Public Hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for Capitol House Public Hearing. We'll now go to the very beginning of the agenda, and we'll take Bill 1943, which needs held to run concurrently with the bill we just had, with Bill 1986.
Bill 1943.
Currently with 1986.
Ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code at Title I Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 192, pensions by adding subsection 192023. So as to add language to allow for elimination of the Social Security offset for municipal employees.
Motion, forgive me, a motion to hold so as to permit 1943 to run concurrently in timeline with 1987.
Second, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it will be held. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 1970.
Bill 1970, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Charmaine character in the amount of $4,462.86 in settlement of a claim for damage to a parked vehicle from a city public works vehicle backing into it December 17th of 2020.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1971.
Bill 1971, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement of sale with Smith and Bowen and all documents necessary to purchase 80 Wabash Street for a total amount not to exceed $374,000, which include the purchase price of $344,000 plus acquisition costs for the purpose of continued operations of the city's West End Healthy Active Living Center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank the administration for their work on this, in particular, Dan Gilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended. Bill 1972.
Bill 1972, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services, and/or data collection activities as associated with 2021 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a cost not to exceed $1,214,418.
Motion to approve, rediscussion?
Second.
Question? Yes, is there someone on the line that can brief council on this bill? I had a couple technical questions.
We have Whitney Flintstrom should be able to assist us, I believe, and David Hutchinson should be able to assist.
Hello, David Hutchinson, I'm the Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management, Mayor's Office Management and Budget.
Hi, David.
Hi, Whitney.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions about how we receive these funds. So are these new grants that separately each organization lied for and then that we received as of the city to disperse?
I'm not sure if they heard you.
Sorry, can you repeat?
Maybe I'll just let you. Can you explain what this bill does?
I'm sorry, which bill are we on?
1972.
I'm just using the enactment numbers.
It's the Emergency Solutions Grant Funds.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're an entitlement community for the Emergency Solutions Grant. It's a HUD-funded program. The Department of Housing and Urban Development gives us money each year to help address the needs of people who are at risk of being homeless. The funds are usually targeted at specific area median income. So a lot of the funds go towards people who are 80% of our area median income and below. Some go to 50% and below. We do have a open application period with the county that we share. We're part of the continuum of care with Allegheny County, McKees, McKees Rocks. Yeah, thank you. Public Safety and some nonprofit homelessness service providers in the area. So they meet monthly and advise us on some of the needs in the community. And then each year, we host a joint application process with the county. We kind of figure out with the county what the right mix of services is to make sure that we're addressing the needs of different vulnerable, vulnerable populations throughout the city.
So based on what you said, I gather that this was decided just in-house as opposed to them applying, you know, through HUD?
They apply locally. These work similar to the Community Development Block Grants from HUD, where as an entitlement community, we are allotted a certain amount of money that's based on a formula that HUD runs, and then we have the decision-making power on how to disperse that money locally.
So this starts homeless prevention services, shelter services, you know, host of homeless efforts to address homelessness in the city and the county. I mean, as Dave said, it's a joint process that we work closely with to, you know, I'm sure that we're working cohesively to address a really tough problem.
Okay, where does the data go? The data collection activities, stabilization services, and data collection activities?
I mean, we can share the, the 1.2, sorry, I have a number in front of it, 1.2 million. two, sorry, I have a number in front of me, one point two million. Organizations applying for funds to address various issues, either shelter services or homeless prevention. And then through the process, application process, there was a scoring system and then those organizations that scored the highest and provided the best level of service are going to be awarded funds. So I don't have that much.
I'm sorry, I need to cut you off. So the, the thing is, it says, and you know, it's going to provide, it's going to support data collection activities. And so I'm just wondering, is each of these entities going to collect data on who they serve and?
Sorry, so that, I think that refers to the HMIS system. It's the Homeless Management Information System that HUD requires that we in the county follow to track homelessness. So we actually pay for that as well as the county. We both kick in funds to, to collect that data. So includes everything from like the point-in-time survey to understand the level of homelessness in the city and the county. So that's, I believe that's what that refers to.
Okay. All right, thanks. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill nineteen eighty.
Bill nineteen eighty. Ordinance amending a supplement in the city code at Title Two Fiscal Article Five Special Funds, Chapter two thirty-seven, Stop the Violence Fund, to clarify uses and restrictions of the fund.
A motion to pro very brief discussion.
Second.
Councilman, do you have a, do we have a list of the changes we wish to see?
Um, yes, but I'm going to actually motion to hold a week because Shetara cannot be at today's meeting. She went next week's meeting. And we're still working on amendments. But I will explain that basically the, the intention of the changes is to make sure that council gets an annual, annual budget of the allocation of those funds and that we annually approve the disposition and just, disposition and distribution of those funds. That's the purpose of, of the, of the change.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It will be held one week. Bill nineteen, we did that one. So next is Bill nineteen eighty-seven. We're actually going to need a motion to table per our solicitor's advice. This bill is no longer necessary.
Motion table.
Bill nineteen eighty-seven. Resolution declaring the city and its municipal pension plan is minimally distressed per the provisions of State Act two oh five of nineteen eighty-four as amended.
Motion to table.
Uh, roll call vote?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero, bill is table.
Thank you. And just for members, um, at some point in the near future, we will call for briefings on all the offset bills. So members understand the actions that we're taking and what's happening. We now need a motion to approve the invoices.
Moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We now need a motion to approve the intra-departmental transfers.
Moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Transfers, transfers, excuse me, are approved. Now I need a motion to approve the P-cards.
Moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Uh, first new papers, Bill nineteen sixty-one.
Bill nineteen sixty-one. Resolution amending, resolution number two oh five entitled, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Museum and Historical Commission to rehabilitate the windows of the Oliver Bath House. The grant proposal includes a request of one hundred thousand dollars with a local match of one hundred thousand dollars to be provided in the twenty twenty-one capital budget to add language to allow the city to accept the grant award and to spend the funds.
Motion to approve for brief discussion.
Second.
I will defer to Councilman.
Just briefly, I, I, I really want to recognize the work of the Pudido Administration, excuse me, on their commitment to saving the Oliver Bath House. This conversation started about fourteen years ago with the possibility of that building actually coming down, which would have been devastating. Oliver Bath House has such an amazing and rich history in, in not just the South Side, but really all of South Pittsburgh. I learned to swim there when I was five. You know, God knows how old I am. So it's been around forever and, and people love that building and the services it provides, uh, unlike most anything else. So I just, the Pudido Administration has been incredibly generous with, with allocations and for seeking grant funds to, to restore that building and bring it to its former glory. Much of it is structural in nature, uh, which is, is very difficult and invasive to do in a building that way. But the commitment to that building and the services it provides has really been a priority for them. And, and I just wanted to say publicly how grateful I am and hope.
Learned how to swim there, why do you still wear floaties?
We let him in. So, but I just, it's important that, that I say thank you. Uh, and thanks to members for supporting. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, uh, Councilman Coghill?
I just want to congratulate you, you know, I took the tour when we had to work and, oh gosh, it was a couple of years ago. But yeah, historic in nature, unique to any city. Uh, I'm really glad you got the job done there. And actually, there was people from my district swimming there the day we, we took the tour. So, so it's nice to see.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill nineteen sixty-two.
Bill nineteen sixty-two. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Keystone Communities Grant Program to provide funding for the purchase of play equipment in Phillips Park. The grant proposal includes a request of thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill nineteen sixty-five.
Bill nineteen sixty-five. Resolution granting unto Kevin and Katrine Heher, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, replace a set of existing steps and retaining wall presently constructed in the right away with new steps, a raised planter, and a retaining wall in same location at fifty thirty-five Castleman Street, Seventh Ward, Eighth Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill nineteen sixty-six.
Bill nineteen sixty-six. Resolution granting unto W A G four L P, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense fourteen type-one architectural walls gowns, five type-two architectural walls gowns, three architectural fabric awnings, and two bollards at twenty-four hundred East Carson Street in the Sixteenth Ward, Third Council District.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Mr. Wilson. Want to refer paper Bill nineteen oh six.
Bill nineteen oh six. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Article Four, Chapter nine oh eight, Public RAM Districts. Amended the code by the addition of a new section nine oh eight oh three D five Oakland Sub District E, O P R E Oakland Crossings.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion? Question, Councilman Gross?
Uh, thank you very much. I'm going to offer up first and foremost a motion to amend the bill. But before I do this, I realize Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Gross do not have this condensed version. And Brasha, I know you're listening. Could you please email Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strasburger? You sort of break down. Thank you. Uh, if you could please send to Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Gross, the condensed version that breaks down the, the commitments, if you will, to the, to the Oakland plan that we, that we put together. So with that, I'm going to offer up a motion to amend. We can amend the bill depending on council's pleasure and then discuss the amended bill or I can go through the bill first. What would you wish to do?
Amend first.
Okay, so motion to amend.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is amended, Councilman Gross.
Okay, all right. So, so first and foremost, I have to recognize the work of my chief of staff, Brasha, who, for the last better part of five or six days, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, just focused on how we can meet the goals of the Oakland Steering Committee in the context of having this piece go over to the Planning Commission. So you are going to see extensive concessions that were made through deliberation. Uh, and once again, I really have to, I really, really have to recognize the expertise of Brasha, what she brought to this discussion and what we were able to achieve through her, her knowledge, her wisdom on the subject and, and how we came up with what we came up with. The reason I distributed this is I, I know it would be quite laborious to go into excruciating detail on everything that we made. But if you want to follow through on the, on the sheet that, that I provided to you, what we took from the Oakland Steering Committee's commitment to seeing development take place in Oakland, we focused on fundamental points. Those were housing and intentional placement, the height maximums, efficient and well-designed buildings, a commitment to a cohesive and open quarter, and developments have to be contextual with existing residential structures and being considerance of residents' desires. And so within those contexts, we broke down what was really the most important component of, of respecting the wishes of the Steering Committee. And that was to look at housing. Uh, and we, we looked at housing in, in two ways. Uh, do we look at it as affordable housing? And we looked at it as walk-to-work housing. Uh, and walk-to-work housing was a very, very broad, sorry, was a very broad discussion to have. We didn't, uh, we really wanted to taper what walk-to-work housing means. If you're a physician making seven hundred thousand dollars a year, you want to work in Oakland and you want to walk to work, that's one component. If you're a member of S C I U, you clean the hospital. You're making thirty-five a year. You want to work, walk, uh, you want to live in Oakland and be able to walk to work. We wanted to make certain that you were recognized and respected as well. So much of the changes that you're going to see here is reflective in housing and, and a commitment to walk-to-work housing as broadly defined as we could possibly make it to make certain that that was a key component in, in moving this piece of legislation over. The second piece was the heights. The heights that were being requested, they were just, they were just out of line. They were, they were way too, way too excessive. Uh, and they compromised especially Coltart Street. And we were very worried that it would make this cavern effect of having these large developments on either side of Coltart. Uh, and so the, the district that's being suggested is broken down in three pieces, A, B, and C. A being what the street, forgive me, the properties that are on Hellcat Street now. We reduced the height of those significantly and changed the setbacks and footprints and what's permitted to exist in those building and how much room that those components could actually take and how must, how much, excuse me, must be committed to housing. Um, and so you'll see that, you'll see those reductions in height commitment and housing and restriction on occupancy in all three districts. But they are different because they contain different functions. Then the third component being efficient and well-designed buildings, focusing on sustainability, quality materials and of the buildings. Uh, we focused on Uptown's Eco Innovation District because so much of that through the work of Councilman Lavelle, already existing code, and much of what we were seeing was really not complimenting what was already in code. So we made adjustments to make certain that what existing code is compatible with what exists in here now and referenced the eco-districts quite often throughout the legislation. You'll see a commitment to lead standard. There is a hotel that is being proposed. Uh, we put restrictions on the height and placement of the hotel. There is a grocery store component, I'm sure we all know that. Fifty percent of the building has to be residential. Uh, and there are additional requirements that already exist in code such as commitments to public art and things like composting stations. Uh, and then the commitment to a cohesive and open quarter. At least fifty percent of the ground floor has to be dedicated to active uses. We don't want dead space on the first floor. Uh, so that would mean childcare, residential, retail, restaurant, office, lobby, bike storage, uh, and other uses, as well as other uses that are not explicit uses. Designs must minimize curb cuts when interacting with private roads. The boulevard is not to be interrupted or to endanger pedestrian traffic. Uh, at least fifty percent of the building fronts must be transparent. The preservation of the Isley Building, which I'm sure everybody here is familiar with, building is going to be deconstructed. Uh, all of the pieces will be inventoried. The building will be reconstructed and then, uh, the facades will be put back in place, much like what you saw at the Honus Wagner Building downtown when Point Park University expanded up to Fourth, Fourth Street. Demolition is predicated on submission of proposed site plan for review. It cannot go in, much like what happened at the Civic Arena, demolish property and then have it sit for ten years. It is, it is contingent on having a proposed site planned before you can receive any permits for demolition. Uh, and the developments must be contextual to existing residential structures. So ground floor parking must be screened. Parking facing residential areas will be screened and subject to a design review. Noise operations are limited to ten P M. to six A M. Lights must be directed away as to not harm residents. Uh, rear of building need to be articulated walls if over fifty feet. And an articulated wall means it cannot just be a blank brick wall that somebody is subject to looking at this fifty-foot high and just blocks any kind of of view or interest they may have. That space must be articulated in some way, shape, or form if that's space is going to, to exist. And then, of course, no visible dumpsters or loading zones can be facing residents. And I know we've gone down this road before with making those kinds of things internal and they haven't necessarily been successful. But it goes much more into detail in the legislation to make certain that those things are clearly out of sight and, uh, contained deep within the, the spaces that need the dumpster sites so as to not impose any discomfort on residents. So brief version, happy to open it up. I believe Councilwoman Gross, I know she has her hand up. She's going to want to comment, but I'm happy to take questions from members and answer as, as I can.
I've got, thank you, Councilman, for the explanation. I have Council President Smith followed by Councilwoman Gross, then Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you.
One more thing, Maya. I just want to thank the Council President. Did I already that you came as, as the sponsor of the legislation? Appreciate your support.
It's okay, thank you, thank you. I want to thank you and your office for working through. As you know, my heart with Oakland, I, I just love the place and still love a lot of the people there. But I did get a lot of text messages and calls from Oakland residents that were totally supportive. So I want to make sure that that's known to, although they did not all come out to speak. Um, some did go on TV later, it's my understanding, to talk about it. But I think, as I mentioned to you before, it really makes us, I think, take a better look at how we do development in the city of Pittsburgh. Um, I've talked about this to a, a lot of the members. I think there's a lot of times we have groups or organizations that, you know, claim to represent people or areas. And sometimes they don't even reside in those areas or don't actually know, or give a miss. or give a mis, I won't say intentionally, but somehow they give an impression that, you know, every resident or that they speak for a lot of residents. And sometimes that's just not the case, not all times, but sometimes it's not the case. But I do think we need to do better in terms of development and how we engage the public through council, with council, and with any existing organizations that are trusted in, in, in the community. But it's building that trust in the community that's really difficult. You know, we have one CDC in our area and they had to, they had to do a lot to build trust in, in Mount Washington. But we've had one in the West End that never seemed to, to get past that threshold of the community support, being supportive. So what I will say is that I want to thank you for all your work. These are all the things I've heard from people that were really important to residents. A lot of the things here that you can tell a lot of work went into this, but it's really talks about your leadership. It really does because honestly, I think it ta, you taught me this a long time ago, you have to build a consensus. And that's what makes a really good councilperson is someone who's willing to work with people. But you, you lead by example in that area. So I really want to thank you for your work on that because I think the Oakland residents, if it can't be me representing, I think they have some amazing representation in the members that do represent that area and, and you're one of them. So thank you for your work on this. It's important to the community.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Hi, thank you. I a question last week, how this legislation is proceeding and what is the legal path? Because I'm still now confused and I, you know, I had a lot of the, the questions about how to do this when I, twice now I've put zoning changes on the table for inclusionary zoning. And when we worked on that with the administration, there were, I thought, only two paths. And I talked about this a little bit last week. To change the zoning of a parcel, which is not a zoning variance. I was misquoted, I think, in the media today saying that I had spoken last time about a property owner appealing for a zoning variance. That was not what I was reading from code. The paths that I was talking about is that zoning of a parcel or many parcels can be changed either initiated by the zoning administrator, which goes through Planning Commission before it ever legislatively hits our agenda. Or zoning changes can be initiated by a council member. It doesn't say that zoning changes can be, not zoning variances, but zoning changes. It does not say zoning changes can be initiated by mayor's legislation, which this started as. And then we held the first draft of the legislation that was initiated by the mayor for a public hearing. But I was trying to read Brasha's email, Councilman Kraus, and I realized it was a, we, I think, was an amendment by substitution that we just did? Because it doesn't really, I'm trying to follow kind of the talking points from her email, which is a memo, and look at the really new language that you just put on the table and it's very hard to see. So is there a strikeout version?
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, absolutely.
So Councilwoman, this is not an amendment by substitution. This is amendment of the original bill and presented. There is a strikeout version, Madam Clerk, was, it was distributed, correct?
The email I got just didn't have any strikeouts.
Yeah, there's strikeouts in the version that was sent.
Councilwoman, there was an email that came from Councilman Kraus's office that had a zip folder. If you open up that folder, it had both versions of the bill in it, the strikeout and the memo version.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. It's really hard to.
It is extensive, Councilwoman. I do appreciate that. And while we tried to break it down into, into, into bite-sized, I hate to say that, but bite-sized pieces to understand philosophically the changes that we were not happy with and the changes that we wish to effectuate.
Um, so. And so this newly amended version is the one that you want to send to Planning Commission?
If members wish to do so, yes.
Yes, okay. And so, and you want to not give the public time to look at the new one?
I'm sorry, forgive me?
You don't want to give the public time to see the new one?
So I, I failed to make the request of Madam Clerk to post this publicly on the council website so that everyone can see this, that wishes to, to see it. We are distributing it to people that have called in, that wish to have it so that they can see it as well, too. The, this is the first step of a very long and arduous process. It will come back to council for further consideration and there will be opportunities to make additional tweaks. There cannot be anything substantive once it comes back because then we'll be required to restart the process and send it back to Planning Commission. So one of the reasons that we wish to make these substantive changes now is that we can, we can send a clear message along with the legislation that this is what we wish to see and, and that it complies with existing code and what is already required. And again, as I said earlier, much of it, not much, but a substantial portion we took from the Eco Innovation District in Uptown, which was clearly considered passed by this council and supported.
I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear that. I did catch when you're reading this memo, which was very helpful, some of those things around the process around demolitions, some of the process around, you know, heightened community involvement, I think is really critically important. And I could hear that. Was really interested to hear the part about the garbage management. So I'm going to have to look more closely at that because certainly we struggle with that in some of our busy business districts as well in my, and I haven't looked into the zoning code for that. So I think that's helpful. So again, so this, you're doing this substantive or substantial amendments upfront. Then it goes to planning and it has public process there. I still, I feel like I'm the only person who is stuck on this issue of how zoning legislation gets in, you know, zoning changes, map changes get initiated. So like, no other members seem to have any concerns about that. It seems to me like the mayor is acting like a councilperson by putting, trying to initiate a map change. Whereas the administration should do it, his zoning administrator, who has the responsibility of map changes and of managing the design review process in the public realm, which is slightly different. That's the way our code reads, but, so I see that. How are you doing? I'm sorry, this is interrogative also. Or maybe if there's, you know, someone from planning that needs to answer this question rather than the new Councilman Kraus, that's totally fine, too. But so how, how does the memo, since I've just gotten both, how did, and I'm intellectually curious about this. How does the memo strengthen, like comport with the amendment you made? Are we attaching it like Exhibit A?
No, it was just be, because the, the, the changes were so substantive as not to go through each one line by line by line, which I'm happy to do, but I don't know that members are, are wanting to go that deep into it. So we tried to break it down into sections. The, and the sections we, we extracted specifically from the Oakland Steering Committee, of which Brasha has attended every meeting, Councilman Lavelle, myself, Councilwoman Strasburger, all members of that as well. And so we broke it down intentionally to reflect the Oakland Steering Committee. So we broke it down into pieces where the legislation affected housing and intentional placement, maximum heights that are permitted in areas A, B, and C, the efficient and well-designed buildings that focus on sustainability and quality and materials in the composition of those buildings, a commitment to a cohesive and open quarter and developments that are contextual with existing residential structures.
But is it, is it embedded in the zoning language that you worked on? Like I'm saying, like I, I, there's, you know, no way for me to look at it just quickly and see whether the, the things that you just said are actually the thing. And, and Councilwoman Strasburger sent me, resent me the email. I don't know what's happening on my screen because when I open it, there's no strikeouts. So I don't understand what I'm seeing. I'm just seeing all clean text.
If you, you have to, for me, I'm so sorry, but I had to download it to see the strikeouts, just as a note.
I figured I didn't have some feature on or something. I really appreciate that and I apologize to the public process. The.
And just to answer your first part of, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, just to answer your first part of that question. The language in the amended bill is not reflective in the, in the breakdown here. This is more philosophical in nature. The specificities of the language change are contained within the amendment.
Yeah. I just feel like we've done this before. I've certainly done it. Zoning variance is not in zoning legislation where I've attached what is basically, you know, an MOU or a set of agreements with community members with the legislation or the zoning request so that it's sent to, that's, it was ZBA, not planning, but so that ZBA had it to take into consideration. So that's something similar to way, way we send community agreements that are non-binding on our part to, to the PLCB these days. And for them to have into consideration, but then they make it binding. I'm, I'm just wondering if that would be helpful in this situation as well. So it goes over with the clerk, you know, when the clerk sent it.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'll depend on the clerk's discretion. If she feels it's helpful in some way to send this piece over as well, we'd be happy to do that. Yeah, I guess to send it over with us as an attachment in some way.
We just, when we do the, when I do the liquor license ones, I've done like ten of them, right? And I just like literally attach it as Exhibit A.
Yeah, it's already. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I guess that's my questions for now. I don't know if anyone else has some, any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to start with a couple of very specific questions, working off of the one-page explainer and then go more general. With, actually first, let me say, thank you, Councilman Kraus, for your diligence, your work. I know that this is a, a huge proposal that involves a lot of players with many, many strong opinions. So thank you for, for your work. Thanks also to Brasha for her amazing work these last couple of days that I found out about yesterday, that she's just been working nonstop for, for basically four days on these amendments. And they're impressive and I have a couple of questions about them. One is in the walk-to-work component, that rental unit cost will not exceed thirty percent of the gross income of the occupant. That's the goal for affordable housing, that no one spends more than a third on their, on their, on their living costs. But I'm wondering what the mechanism is for actually enforcing that. That's a little bit different from setting actual units aside at eighty percent AMI or fifty percent AMI. Don't want to put you on the spot, but I am curious what the mechanism is for kind of ensuring, for the building owner to ensure that that is the case.
I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that question as an enforcement component to legislation that we craft. We get that all the time. You can put anything on the books, but who's going to enforce it? I don't know that I'm necessarily qualified to answer that. But if, perhaps if I ask Brasha to come out, she might explain a little bit in greater detail how and why we, we went down that road.
I would be happy to hear directly from Brasha and while she's coming out, I can move on to a couple of other questions and see, she might be the best person to answer these other questions as well. The other one that I, that kind of stuck out to me was that is in Section One, subsection A, that if there's a failure to produce documentation within three years, owner will pay one percent of gross building costs. What, can you explain that a bit more? I'm not, I'm not really sure what that means in this context.
It's to, to state it as simply as I can, it's to put a timeline by which there has to be deliverables. It can't hang out there forever. So once a proposal is made, if it is not brought in, hi Brasha, thanks for coming out. If it's not brought in, in that timely manner, there is a penalty and it's one percent of construction cost. And I think that begins at approximately a million dollars.
Okay, so they're paying a penalty. They're not paying, that makes more sense. Got it. They're paying a penalty that is equal to the amount of one percent of the construction costs.
That's correct.
Got it, got it. Okay, that makes sense.
Brasha, thanks for coming out. I appreciate it. Not to put you on the spot, but Councilwoman Brasha is here. If you want to ask your first question again?
Thank you, Brasha. My question was about the, I guess the enforcement around the thirty percent, no, more than thirty percent of gross income of the occupant, making each unit affordable for that particular person to ensure walk, walk-to-work housing. I think these kind of guidelines to actually understand or define what walk-to-work housing is are incredibly important. But this is a different, this is a different animal that I'm, that we're working with as opposed to setting strict limits on AMI percentage at a, you know, for a certain number of units. So I'm wondering how this actually, if you know or can explain to me how this actually then plays out in reality, once the, the building is, is, is built.
I'm not sure I can speak directly to how the thirty percent would be since that would be something that is done by the building owner or the partnering institutions. So these are conversations between the large institutional actors in the Oakland neighborhood as well as whoever would be owning the building. It would be their role, but there is a safeguard that they have three years to come into compliance. If they do not come into compliance, I believe the exact language here, give me one second. Sure, so the zoning administrator will verify that within twelve months of, they have three years to come into compliance here or they pay a fine of one percent of gross costs. And if they do not do that within a month, they lose occupancy. That is revoked.
So that is, so these are commitments that we are holding them to through that sort of penalty after the fact that might be codified at a certain future point as, as the, as the developer goes through a development process and, and seeking permits. But these are really just commitments that we're, that we're holding them to with a little bit of teeth to them. Is that a, a good summary of, of how we enforce?
I think that's correct and, and I referenced, this is, you know, what is in the Uptown Eco Innovation District as a guideline of making sure that the city does have some teeth in enforcing these promises. So, you know, losing occupancy, I believe, is a, is a decently severe consequence.
Okay, that's very helpful. Those are all the specific questions I have on this matter. But just to speak more generally for a moment, I this is a really, this is a tough one for me because on the one hand, I see elements of this proposed project that, to be clear, we're not even voting on the project at this point. We're voting on a rezoning that would open up the doors for a property owner to be able to develop on certain parcels of land along with many, many other partners. So we're, we're kind of talking, it's confusing for people who aren't, who might be following generally from home or watching this, but aren't really, haven't actually looked at the, the legislation. We're voting on rezoning of the land. The conversation around what actually is going to be built really comes later. But, but for the purposes of all of this, we're taking it all together. We're considering them all at the same time. And yes, there has been a robust planning process that we're in the middle of in Oakland. And if anyone has ever worked with me, they know that I appreciate public process and I want, I, I want a project to be built that not only is positive and seen as a positive thing for people who move here ten years from now and were a part of the process. I also want the people who currently live in Oakland, as many as possible, including the people who represent, you know, who are leaders in Oakland, to feel good about the process, to feel good about, to feel, to have been. you know, who are leaders in Oakland, to feel good about the process, to feel good about, to feel, to have been brought into the process and feel like this is for them as well. And so while I'm going to vote in favor of this today, I want to state clearly that I want to continue to see efforts made to to, to work collaboratively with the community. And the community in this case is many of the people who testified in opposition to this. We are being asked to table this bill and I actually think that that is exactly the opposite of what we want. I want to continue to talk about this because I want to see if there is any way to, to, to get as many people on board with the rezoning in a future, really, you know, what I think could be a really positive plan for this area that needs significant investment. But I guess what I'm saying is I, I hesitate to commit to, to being a yes vote for, for the foreseeable future on this plan unless we can get some more community members at the table and really, really try to, to work through it. Between the time, between now and the time that it comes back to council after being voted on, being considered at the planning commission. I think that's all I have to say about this right now, but I appreciate answering my questions. Appreciate you indulging me and just wanted to share my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, will you permit an interrogatory for a moment?
Yes.
So Councilwoman, thank you for your comments. Greatly appreciated. And perhaps Brasha and I can both sort of do this interrogatory. What we struggled with through the process was the fact that we only have a zoning change in front of us. But we were trying to imagine as the process unfolds, the possibilities of what could take place and how to reference back to existing code and previous developments to make certain that what we think could come down the road had very tight guide rails on it, that applicable code was referenced and, and that any development would be held accountable to it. So we were kind of trying to, not kind of, we were imagining a zoning change, what it could permit and how to, to put tight guidelines on any future development. And it really was Brasha's expertise in understanding the intricacies of what could happen, which really helped us to negotiate the kinds of changes that you see in here. And again, it will come back to us again, excuse me, and as long as those changes are not substantive, which means I mean, we would have to almost blow it up and start over again. There is room for reconsideration and say, we should have thought of this, or we should have thought of that. Or maybe this was a little bit too extreme. Maybe we should roll this back to that. Brasha, do you want to offer anything?
Sure. I, I just want to say that the, the intent of, of this, of this legislation is to make sure that we can create a box into which development is built. So if the box doesn't have a top, you know, we have a problem with heights. If we cannot control or direct the use in some way, then it, the, the way that the corridor would look would be incredibly different. So if, for example, if we want to rezone a, a high density residential area, but we don't include a component saying that at least 50% of all buildings need to remain residential, then anything can be built there. And it's, it's really a desire to make sure that we can be in keeping with any larger goals that the city has. And this will be a development which generations will, will inhabit. So I think it's important to be able to do that now and to be as tight as possible because again, as the councilman said, you know, you can make changes and, and all of this would go to the planning commission or the zoning board of adjustments for a, a change in use or a special exemption of something like that. But again, it puts, it puts that on the, on the developer to go through a process and really rationalize why they want to do certain things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess.
Three things. First of all, if the bill sponsor allow me, I'd like to be a co-sponsor.
Please, thank you.
I will vote for it now. I will vote for it when it comes back. I have, Mr. Kraus and I have had conversations in general. And over the next couple of years, we intend, and I was, I'm saying publicly, but we've decided privately, we will work even closer together in the foreseeable future. I want to commend him on his work on this. I know this was difficult. And you and your staff, this is human's work and you have my, as someone who tries to craft legislation, right? I, I see its intricacies and its delicate nature of it. And so as a workman, I, I see the skill and how this is crafted. And so I am proud to, to support you on this, first of all. Second of all, I want to at least give you my perspective. I heard Councilwoman Gross say something and I, I want to at least give you my perspective on it. And I'm not necessarily right, but it's been my perspective and understanding since being a member of council, having reviewed the Home Rule Charter. The, the council is the people's table. This is the public place where people get to participate in a very public, lights on, cameras on, public hearings, post agendas, standing committees in a very public way. This is how we transact the people's business here. The way I understand it, again, I can be wrong. Once any legislation comes to council, only a council person can introduce it. The mayor or the controller or any department can forward over to us suggestions, recommendations for legislation. They have zero power to introduce it. We don't talk about it much, but you know, we don't do it much anymore. But back in the day, you remember Patrick Dow with, with pocket veto for weeks and weeks and weeks, right? You know, if he didn't like it, he wouldn't introduce it. And so only a council person can introduce it now. Sort of like magic. Once the council person introduces the legislation, it don't really matter where it comes from. It's our legislation, similar to the budget. It's the same thing, zoning budget, same process. It doesn't matter who, or who, where it originates from. Once it comes to this table, it's ours and we have complete and utter control of it, right? And so what I mean is even though the mayor may have written this or his office to suggest to us, once it hits our table, it's no longer his, it's ours. And as Mr. Kraus has showed in his leadership, right? He's taken that thing and reworked it, right? So it, because it's his. Yeah. And so I want to, I want to suggest to you in those two things. One is council as a co-equal form of government is the people's table. This is our job. And once we introduce something, whatever that is, you know, depending on what it is, it's the majority of council that decides what it is. And we listen to the public, we give public comment. I'm always interested when people don't want public. They don't do things in public. I've always, I've always, that's been my thing since I've been a member of council. And all of you who know that about me, I believe everything we should do should be done here at the table. I've said this from day one, right? That if you put it on the table, it should be done in public. Whatever we're doing should be done in public. And I'm, I'm, I'm one, even when Darlene would have all of these hearings of, you know, interviews. And sometimes she'd interview, you know, people who I, but I always supported her right to do that because you cannot err the side of being public, right? That's always right. Yeah. Lastly, I want to suggest something which I think this helps us to think about, which is the other piece of legislation that may eventually come back to us, right? We're saying that we're going to rezone this, but we're kind of nervous, not nervous, but we want to be very intentional about what's built there. I think that's the intent, right, of this zoning is to try to be very intentional about where it comes there. And Councilman Bell and I talked about this. Right now, the planning commission has its criteria of how it can approve development, right? But they're very limited by code of what they can approve, what they can really reject. They can approve anything, but they, they can only reject things based on their own criteria. They, they really don't have an ability to really look at the greater public good. Council does. I believe perhaps the legislation we have of giving council some final say so on some type of big scale development, right? Perhaps Penn Plaza, the outcome of that would have been very different, right? If, if we had had the power to say no, that whole process would have been very, very different. The Civic Arena would have been very, very different. Many of these big, maybe even Mercy Hospital would have been very, very different. And so those of us who want to support affordable housing and want to make sure that we have public, public buy-in and public participation, I'm hoping that that same energy will be supportive of giving council in, we have to work out what that looks like, but in some, some of these big developments, giving council the final say so, which we legally have that right, right? We have to receive a report from the planning commission. We don't really, we don't have to follow their recommendation. It takes seven votes to, you know, to say something different or five votes if, if it's affirmative. But my point is, yeah, my point is I think this conversation shows you why having that authority could be important because we can now help to mold, protect and shape a neighborhood based on factors of our knowledge and experience with those communities. That's very different from the administrators, the zoning planning commission. And so again, I'm, I'm, I'm proud to be a, a co-sponsor. I think this is really well done. And I look forward to supporting it now and in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion first round? Councilman Cargill.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus. Brasha, I want to thank you both for your work on this. You know, it's easy for me to sit in the South Hills and say, this is a good thing for the city of Pittsburgh and, you know, the jobs that come with it and the housing. However, I know what you were faced with, you know, with the Oakland, was it the Oakland Steering Committee? So, so I was concerned about that. And, you know, this is a lot of work that you, a lot of changes you made. And I'm just curious as to, is this, is a developer aware of these changes and are they supportive and they're willing to go by?
So, yes, are they necessarily happy with the changes?
Different story.
Maybe not, but they're, they certainly, they're not resisting. They, I hate to say agree, but they did not say, we can't do this. Would you like to further comment on that, Brasha?
Sure. Just to say that these, I don't think these changes are, you know, too hard for them to achieve. It's just going to force them to be creative, to design well-designed buildings. And I believe they're more than capable of producing a quality product. And this sort of ties them to that.
Going back and forth, there was, there was a, a lot of tay to tay. And consistently, continually, Brasha and I, but under her leadership, held them to a higher standard. Yes, you can do this. We understand that, but is that really enough? Why can't we do this? And if that's, you know, okay, let's make it great. Let's make sure we take it to the, the pinnacle it deserves. And much of it, as I've said before, but I can't restate enough, it already exists in code. There were things that came over in the legislation that were not in keeping with the code as it exists today. And it was very helpful to go back and reflect on the Uptown Innovation Eco Innovation District and understand what worked well, what perhaps maybe didn't work as well as it could have, how to make that better. And to consistently reference back, this already exists. We're going to hold you to the standard because we've already agreed to that standard.
Well, you know, I'm glad to hear that. And I, I assume that you did check with all parties and I thank you for, you know, putting it all together to this point at least. But to just emphasize on the good things about this project and why I'm supportive of it is number one, the housing, you know, increased tax base for the city of Pittsburgh. Oakland is changing, you know, at a rapid pace, I feel, you know, and it will, you know, cater to the students and the people who work there and the university and the UPMC and everybody else that's involved, I hope. You know, the, I like, I love the fact that, you know, this developer is a local product. You know, I feel like their heart is in Pittsburgh. I've talked to them many times and actually tried to recruit them for projects in my district because I am impressed with the work that they have done throughout the city. So, you know, that gives me a comfort level knowing that they're from Pittsburgh. And the fact that they're going to use all of our local labor unions to build this place to jobs, you know, to, is an exclamation mark on the whole thing for me. So there's many, many jobs here for at least over a couple of years, I would imagine. So. So I just wanted to thank you for your work. I, I will be supportive. You know, I hope you're able to continue the, you know, the cooperation with all parties and look forward to supporting it.
Mr. Chair, it, it's, it's important. There's one component that was left out of the councilman's conversation, not intentionally, I'm sure, but it's the residents. It's the people that have lived there for generation after generation after generation, Salvatore Marianti. You know, I mean, that's Oakland. And these were very, 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 very difficult conversations to have with constituents that are, that I consider to be friends, that I have known for 15, 17 years. And to, to bring this to them and feel the opposition and, and, and it was, it was, they were painful. We went into Oakland yesterday, had some very difficult discussions with people that I respect tremendously that disagreed with what we are, are doing today. And it, it was difficult, but to, to go back to what Councilman Burgess was, was suggesting. When Councilman, Councilman Shields served on the council, there, there's one thing. I learned a few things from him.
We both did.
A few things that I am glad I didn't pick up either. But he, he stressed that anyone can put anything on the table at any time, that it, it, it is open for discussion, that it is not within. I am not a, a, a person that's going to pocket veto and say, I definitively am going to restrict and make the decision solely myself, what can be talked about here? You, you have every right to put it on the table. We may say it's the dumbest thing we've ever heard in our lives and firmly reject it. We may like it in its entirety and pass it swiftly and we may take a process like this by which, no, we're going to dissect it. We're going to look at it, you know, in all of its complexities and come up with what we think would be the best for it. But I will defend the right of someone to put it on the table. Someone spoke at the public hearing. I can't remember who made the comment, but it, it really stayed with me. And the comment was, no, process is not process. And that silencing or gagging someone from being able to talk about something is not process. Put it on the table, work diligently to make it be the very best that it can be, send it over there. It's going to be, it is going to be, as we already know, a very public process when it hits the planning commission. And I suspect people from a multitude of opinions are going to come out during the hearings at the planning commission to express either support, opposition, changes they want to see. And then the process will reinvigorate when it comes back to council and we revisit it a second time. So, but it, it, I don't, I do not want the residents of, of Oakland, you know, that are, they're fighting to keep their stake to be lost in the, in the conversation. They have every right to, to live and exist in, in their neighborhood that they have invested in for generations and generations and generations.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to finish up. Good work. You know, hopefully you keep it on the right rails. But I did want to change in gears real quick. Reverend Burgess, you had mentioned the planning bill, okay? And you said large scale. I was under the belief, I thought that was going to be 8,000 square feet or, or less because I'm actually in the middle of a development battle right now. Whereas, you know, and, and I guess I really wanted to know my authority as to can we stop a development that we know that the community doesn't want? Because I do agree with you that we know as council people better than anybody, whether the community is going to accept a development or not. I'm a little concerned that it's just large scale now, though. I heard you say large scale.
So I have not amended the legislation. It is, the, the number you said, I, I just. It is, the number you said, I, I just want to talk about the intention though. I think mostly the intention in practicality is most of us would only use it for, for large scale things. But I do think maybe I'm proud to be a member of council. I guess maybe I am. I guess I am, I'm a little proud to be a member of council. I'm a proud to be a part of the body. I think council is the people's table. At the end of the day, we represent the people. That's what we were elected, that's why we're elected by districts. That's what we do, you know? And, and our decisions represent the people's best interests, their hopes, dreams and desires. And so I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, but I believe that a strong mayor and a strong council will make a stronger Pittsburgh, a stronger city. I believe that. And, and I'm proud to be a member of this body and as we move forward together.
I too am proud to be a member of council and I do believe your intentions are to strengthen council. Nothing further than that. Conversation goes, but, and we'll get into the details and there will be some words we go along. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round, Council President?
I'll just be real quick, I see Coria Connor making this. I just want to say, I, I'm glad that you also preserved the Isley's Building in this, in this package, that that's one of the things that they're working on. But I hope that they would also maybe consider helping to save St. Agnes a little bit. I think that's also important to the, a lot of the residents. But I want to point out that this is a lot of union jobs. And with those union jobs, and particularly in the building trades, there's a huge effort underway with the carpenters union who are training minorities from within the city of Pittsburgh, actually around the county. And they may be some of the people employed at this job site. And so I want to make sure that we're talking about, these are jobs for our local Pittsburgh residents too, not just development for an area that really has seen more than their share of development. And I mean, I hate seeing the way Oakland's changed over the years, but in some ways, there's some great things, but in other ways, it's painful to watch. And so I would love to, I wish that we had the, the vision years ago to save some of the history in Oakland the way that we should have in the Hill. I mean, there's a lot of things that we should, but we're dealing with what we have now and what we have now is blight. And it's not okay to have a lot of residents living amongst blight. And so I think that this is really a good opportunity to employ people, end the blight in that section and, and work with the residents and get the residents what they want to as part of the development. So thank you again for your work. Please look into that.
Thank you. So we voted on the bill, so we voted to amend the bill. We now need a motion to send for reporting recommendation to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'll abstain. I'm sorry, Councilman, I'm just gonna, I can't, I can't figure out what you put in front of me. So I'm going to abstain today. Thank you.
Happy to discuss with you.
One abst, one abstention. The bill will be sent to the Planning Commission for reporting recommendation.
Yeah.
Bill 1973.
Bill 1973, resolution requesting authorization for the Mayor and Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections to enter into an amended agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics to digitize microfiche and a perchers card holding historic permitting data and add them to the department's digital library. The agreement is chargeable and payable from the following account in an amount not to exceed $260,600.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill 1974.
Bill 1974, resolution for the amending resolution number 863, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving 2019 Capital Budget, the 2019 CDBG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, so as to reduce the light of Kimberly by $5,000 and increase Family Services United and the Light of Kimberly by $5,000 and authorize a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill 1975.
Bill 1975, resolution for the amending resolution number 647, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget, the 2021 CDBG Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program, so as to identify specific projects in City Council District 1, 4, 5, 6 and 8 and authorize a subsequent agreement on behalf of the residents of the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our last committee is Intergovernmental Affairs, shared by Councilman Gross, one paper, Bill 1967.
Bill 1967, resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official soul facilities plan for the Julian A. Hudson property project, which will involve the development of a 10-story, 148 multi-unit apartment building with an underground parking garage. The site address is 419 Melwood Avenue in the 5th Ward.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements with sessions starting at 1 o'clock and 2 o'clock this afternoon. Council will hold a briefing with the Wilkinsburg City Council. The School Board Reimproachment Advisory Committee will hold their first meeting next Thursday, October 21st at 5:00 PM in the large conference room. We will also make it available virtually to those who are unable to attend in person. Next week, council will hold our regular understanding committee meetings on Tuesday, October 19th and Wednesday, October 20th, respectively at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration closes at 9:00 AM. The morning of those meetings, to register to speak at the next week's meetings, fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage for the registration deadlines. You may also call the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138 or email cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Anything else from members? Councilman Burgess?
Quickly. I will start talking about this most of the time. We've been blessed during my time on council to see my district get lots of large-scale development. It had not had any, not that I'm the person, but it had not had any before I came. And it has had variety of large-scale for about mixed income housing and projects since I've been there. But I've come to the conclusion, and, and we have, you know, gotten more city services, right? I was on the bottom of the list when I came to council. We're at the top of the list now. The sad part though is I've come to the understanding that all the work we've done will not matter because the banks and the financial institutions are still redlining black communities and black people. They are only, of the last 10 years, only 8% of loans went to black people. Even though we are 23% of the population now. And so we need to now, we need help, whether it's, I'm not sure how to get this help. I will start talking about it and asking for both investigations and for some support. This is outrageous, outrageous that the banks do not lend in poor communities to the people who live there. It's a closed system. And the funny, not funny, it could not have a more insidious consequence if they tried. And it's not just my district, it's Councilman Cargill's district too, right? They don't lend in your community either. So it's not just black people, it's, it's people who don't make a lot of money. The banks have a system where they don't lend to them and they don't get the benefit. And those who live in very wealthy prosperous communities disproportionately get loans and investments. And so we're going to have to do something. I'm not sure the answer yet, but I'm going to start talking about it. We have to get the, and that's really, you know, you don't see this, you don't see this in social media much. You don't hear it in TV or in a paper much. But the real problem of institutional racism is the banks and the financial institutions overt and continuing redlining of historically black communities and poor people in this city. And it has to stop if we're ever going to make a difference in the quality, in the overall quality of life of those people and the city as a whole. And so I'll start having that conversation in a very public way moving forward.
Thank you, President Smith.
Thank you. I want to thank Reverend Burgess for his work on, on that and a lot of other things. But over the past few weeks, we have been talking, actually, we've been talking about council taking a stronger role in this city for a very long time. And I've heard some comments over the week that this is just an attempt now that we're looking like we may have our first black mayor in the city of Pittsburgh. So I want to assure the public that, one, this is something that we have emails about. This is something that we have in writing. This is something that we have in legislation that we have been trying to do long before Mayor Paduto came into office. Back when Mayor Ravenstall was in office, we did some of this or tried or talked about it. And we definitely talked about it a lot through Mayor Paduto. As a matter of fact, I was laughing because I was telling Councilman Burgess, I said, you know, if we really wanted to hurt somebody, we really looked into some of the things we could do. And this was some of the things we thought about doing to Mayor Paduto, who now we support. So I want to be honest, I mean, and we had emails back when Kevin Ackland was the Chief of Staff, telling directors that he had to, they had to respond and report to council and work with council. And we've had Chief Gilman do the same. And so the director's part has always been something that we've been trying to work on a little bit to strengthen. And I think the part with the development, we have definitely been trying to. I actually put in legislation to get reports from city planning under Mayor Paduto and so that we could have more information because I felt like council was not getting the information or having to say that we need to have for our residents. But one of the things when Mayor Paduto was first in, we looked to see, okay, how can we make sure that he's going to do what's right for the city and work with everybody and we have a good, you know, work together? Well, one of the things Reverend has a brilliant mind, I think he uncovered was that city council can restructure this, this, this government and how we operate and the things we do, including changing the mayor's position to a manager's position. So if we really wanted to do something detrimental to somebody, believe me, we have the authority and the power to do it. We just, we're not trying to do that. We're trying to strengthen council. Strengthening council doesn't mean weakening a mayor. And if it intimidates somebody or makes somebody feel that way to have a strong council is attacking somebody, then that's a conversation that we need to have because we've heard over the years, many, many times, that the public does not want us to rubber stamp things. They do not want us to just say okay to things and not challenge or question. And we've always tried. We could never get to five because the mayor was so good. He had built relationships over the years and he was just, he and his team were just that good at getting to five. It didn't have to be the same five, they always got to five. So we already knew we were defeated before we went down the road. So we tried working with a lot of people. But I want to say that we are going to continue to strengthen council. We are going to meet and work on some pieces of legislation that we can introduce together to strengthen council, to strengthen our clerk's office and to help us in the communities and do some of the things that we need to do. But with that said, I want to be honest that I've already spoke with some of the people that have some concerns. And I thought that I wanted to hold the bills until, maybe till sometime in November. Because that was the request is that, you know, we at least wait till then. So we'll wait until then, we'll work on some of those bills then, but some of them don't even come back until after the election. It's swearing in actually in January. So that's for the planning part. And the other part is the director's one, which we're talking about. Maybe we could see how we can all come together and get to a place where we feel comfortable, but yet we do not lose that council authority and that council has, you know, is a strong council. And it helps us to be strong with one another. It helps us to deliver things to our residents. It helps us get answers for our community. It helps us to get things done and it helps us, it helps one another, you know, it helps us to be working together and to be able to trust the people in these offices that we're able to work together and get things done without being a detriment to, to one another and to our communities. And it's good for the city of Pittsburgh to have a strong council and a strong mayor, mayor. And we want that and we want to see our mayor be successful. But with that said, we are willing to hold until after then, but we are not willing to weaken council or to whittle down our power or to do anything because we've seen that happen too much over the years. And we've become almost ineffective because we are not, and that, that does not help. If that, that does not help our residents for us to be weak and for us not to have some oversight. But there has to be checks and balances and I don't think anybody should be intimidated by that or anybody should be threatened by that. And I think the public should want that because we are your voice. This gives you a voice. And working with city planning, having nine appointed members who report to one person, a mayor, instead of nine members who report to you. So I think that, that, you know, there's been a lot of misinformation out there, but be, rest assured, these are things we tried for a very long time, but we are willing to work and wait and to work with whomever our new mayor is come November or January. We'll be willing to work with, with anybody. We want to do what's best for the city of Pittsburgh, period. And so with that said, we'll hold the bills after we, we had already discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chair, may I as well?
Sure.
Appreciate it. I'd like to just shift the topic slightly. I appreciate the president's comments that we have been anticipating, I think now for maybe six months, an updated housing study. I don't think I'm getting, I'm saying the words right. So Councilman Lavelle, when you did your first Affordable Housing Task Force, there was also a kind of state of housing report done by city planning and maybe some outside consultants. But it's been a few years already, right? I believe maybe the first house, like kind of state of housing in the city of Pittsburgh was back in 2018. And so we've been anticipating the city planning department completing. I thought that we're going to complete a report earlier this year. And it's really critical, I think, for council to have these discussions about what housing types are needed. For example, family housing versus single person housing, high-rise housing versus low-rise housing or, you know, accessible housing, housing in what part of the city, housing for people in what phase of life they're in, housing in what affordability category, critically important. Because I feel like I hear, even in our public testimony, people talking past one another. Some people claiming that any development anywhere is providing housing that's needed. We heard some public comment today from people saying that other American cities have, especially large cities, have built more housing in, than Pittsburgh, which is, you know, obviously tremendously easy to say because some cities have populations of several million people. And so even if it was the same percentage of housing increase, it would be a net a huge difference in the absolute number of houses built or our dwellings built. But there's also a critical element that you're building the kind of housing that is in demand or that is lacking in your city. And that you're building housing that people can actually use, either because it's within their price or because it is, you know, along transit and they are transit, you know, they don't have mobility options currently and they need those mobility options either for caregiving or for, or for employment. And that it's near schools, that it's near resources, whereas the housing they have now maybe is not. So we were waiting, I think, for that study from the planning department. So I would like to hear an update about that. And then secondly, I think we have to talk about how this question I asked yesterday about boards of commissions, it's actually not unrelated. I mean, it, it occurs to me that these, these things that we're sending to this planning commission is the Mayor Paduto Appointed Planning Commission. Whereas next year, all of those seats vacate at the end of a mayoral term. And so there will be a new planning commission. And it's very possible that there's a kind of, that that's why a mayor gets to a point. I think every member of a planning commission, every member of a zoning board of appeal is that it does change the direction, very possibly of their decisions, right? To align with that mayor's goals. And so I would just like us to all kind of have, again, same information in front of us with, we have a housing report that If we have a housing report that is near completion, I think council's, you know, eager to see that. I can send an email to the planning department, but I know we've been waiting to see it. And also that the question I asked yesterday, and this is kind of directed towards Madam Clerk. I tried to do what you suggested to find out about which boards and commissions are remaining and what are the appointees in those seats and what are their terms? And it isn't very easy on Legistar. And so if it's possible, maybe your staff can download it for members. And I'm imagining it just being like in a table, like in an Excel sheet or something or a single document and send to all members. I'd appreciate that because I think these things aren't unrelated. And I think it's it will help us have an easier conversation about, you know, kind of the things that where we have shared goals that we have very different districts and they may have very different needs. And I often refer to the fact, you know, that I think the city of Pittsburgh has opposite real estate markets. And so it isn't one size fits all. And and this body of us, this nine, you know, us nine members struggle to make good policy. And I think we all do that in good conscience, but it's difficult to make policies for very opposite situations, overheated markets and cold markets, you know, underinvestment and hyperinvestment. So I think if we all have, the more information we all have the same in front of us, I think the better the better policy conversation we can have. So if that was clear, that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we now need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.